Alexandra.
How are you?
I'm well. Jen asked me to cover G and R Used Auto Sales seventy-eight dash eighty, South Jefferson Street. She tells me that you guys have worked out an adjournment date for that for that matter?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, so am I asking for the adjournment or are you just gonna put it on the record? How do you want to do it?
I will, I have a correspondence for her. Once the case comes up, I can bring it up and if you wanted to speak to it, that's. Yeah, it's the second one. So what I'll do is that I'll move it up.
Okay.
It's the second case, I'll move it up and then I'll bring that on, okay? Let me speak to the chairman.
Okay, and.
I hear you.
Oh, sorry, Chairman, you right there.
I got you.
Thank you.
And. Rebecca Moreyello is gonna handle McChesney Street tonight.
Okay.
I'm gonna be on, but she's a young lawyer and she's gonna get a little experience tonight.
All right. Oh, Chairman, you hit it right.
Chairman, be nice to her, please, please be nice to her.
I don't know.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be here in case anything goes.
I mean, she comes from Connolly and Foley, so.
Be here in case anything goes sideways, but you know.
It's like throw her in the deep end, right?
Well, this is, this is, this is, shouldn't be too, it's only a two, two or three, so I'm hoping that we can, we can work it out. Who is that guy? Is that, is that Montague? We got Montague on the, on the scene now?
Yes.
You're, I can't hear you.
He's muted.
Yeah, he's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, I can, I can.
How you doing?
I'm well.
I'm out of town, but I'm doing my duty.
I appreciate, I'm sure I appreciate it. Your shirt looks cool though, must be someplace.
Thank you. Dwight Holmes, are you there?
Thank you, appreciate.
Good to see you, Councilman.
Hey, how are you?
Good, good. Appreciate you making that, making it to the meeting.
Oh, I'm making it to the meeting. I'm in Washington DC, but I'm on the meeting.
Oh, okay. Say hello to your good friend for me.
Yeah, yes, I'm not going, I'm going nowhere near that, man.
That's funny.
Would you like for me to change your name? You're gonna leave it on mute, sir.
Uh, I can change it, I can change it, I'm sorry.
Attorney Webster.
Yes.
Change your name or, yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll change it, I'll change it. Uh, rename. Boom.
All right.
Two, three.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Board Secretary. I don't want to not be compliant and let, and have you not let me in the meeting.
Guess you know me well, huh?
I do, I do, I do, I do. I've been there, I've been on the wrong side of that.
He learns quickly, I tell you.
I, I, I only had to get punched in the head once or twice.
Right, right.
Uh, sometimes it's twice, unfortunately.
Need one second, no Chairman, to me.
Absolutely.
The other member. All right, Mr. Chairman, just missing one member to be able to start.
John, where are you tonight?
Raritan Borough.
All right.
I'm in Orange.
No, you're not.
Virtually, virtually, virtually. I, I meant physically, physically.
Mr. Chairman, looks like we can start.
All right, I'm gonna ask all board members if you could please turn your camera on so we can get started. I know Mayor Warren has his issue with the, the technology, the technical issues, so that's fun. And with that.
Yes.
Ms. Quick, are you ready?
Yes.
Very good. There he is. Good to see you, Mayor. All right, well, we're gonna call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Orange Township Planning Board for today, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty-two PM. I'm gonna ask if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Madam Secretary, have we met the sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with Chapter two thirty-one, Section five of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this remote public meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Orange Township was filed with the municipal clerk of the City of Orange Township, posted on the city's bulletin board designated for that purpose and on all official city website as well as mail to the city official newspaper as provided by ordinance.
Thank you. Can you take attendance, please?
Member Fauston? He is absent. Member on UK?
Present.
Member Mobley, he stated he would be absent. Member Latour?
Present.
Councilman Montague?
Present.
Mayor Warren?
Present.
Vice Chair Jones, she stated she would be absent. Chairman Holmes?
Present.
Coram has been met.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for correspondence, we have the zoning officer for the City of Orange Township responded to the board's request on enforcement at four ninety-six Central Avenue, and I believe he is here, Mr. Allen. Kafani? He may be able to speak. One second, Chairman.
Yes.
Just one second, Chairman, he was joining the Zoom to be able to speak on the correspondence. Um, Attorney Wenzel? Oh, here we go, he's, he's in, all right. Okay. Wait. There we go. Mr. Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Allen is here, he provided the correspondence as stated for four ninety-six Central. With regards to the enforcement, at the previous meetings, the board had requested his presence to discuss further. He's here.
Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Chairman, good evening. How are you?
Doing well.
Very good. You're good. On my way to pick up my son.
All right. You have information on four ninety-six Central Avenue? Mr. Allen?
They were given a court date for all four of these tickets of October twenty-third, if I'm not mistaken, that's the, the court date. But besides that, besides them going to court, I have been in contact with the owner, I spoke with him directly. To my knowledge, he has moved, I mean, as of, I wanna say yesterday, if I'm not mistaken. All of the buses are gone, the ambulance vehicles are gone, the cars, I believe there's one black car that was still there, that's, that's been removed since, and then there was some overgrowth and that's been cut since, so this is as of at least yesterday.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
What address is this?
It's four ninety-six.
Six Central Avenue.
That's on the corner of Central and Scotland?
And what was our issue, Mr. Chairman?
There were buses, ambulances, there was a couple of vehicles and parked on that, on that lot and the overgrowth of the grass.
Is that legal, Mrs. zoning official? No, Mayor, it's not, it's not a permitted use, you cannot store or park vehicles in a vacant lot. And you still do, even though it's a vacant lot, you still do have to maintain the growth of the grass and any litter or debris that is in that lot, and. As of at least yesterday afternoon, when I rode by and took a look at the maintenance of the lot, those vehicles have all been removed, the buses, the ambulance vehicles, and the. The cars that were there have all been removed, and the grass has been cut and all debris removed. None of that negates the fact, though, that they did, they did still receive multiple tickets and citations for myself, and they are due in court scheduled for October twenty-third on off, on all of their SC tickets. Mr. Chairman, are we seeking a motion to have the zoning official notify us of issues related to this property?
If that is necessary, Attorney Wenzel?
So. I, I think the, the board's concern here, if I recall it, was to be kept apprised of the events with regard to this lot's compliance. So I think the board can either pass a motion or if the zoning officer is okay with doing this, if he could. Just send a, a written communication through Ms. Reyes. On a, we don't mind make it every thirty days, because it's probably not activity every thirty days, but maybe, you know, every sixty days or when an event occurs with regard to the enforcement action, to keep the board updated, I think that would be appropriate. The board can make that motion, or if the zoning officer wants to voluntarily provide that, you know, with the understanding the board's looking, just to keep, you know, keep informed of, of those efforts.
And I, I like that, that option, because the zoning officer has done as we requested, and he gave us a, a report of the, he kept us updated, and so I would just be looking for some kind of follow-up at the latest after the, the October twenty-third court date. Is, is that acceptable, Attorney Wenzel?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm playing the role of Mayor Warren, I'm having technical difficulties here, so, yes, the, the, you know, like I said, it's, it's up to Kafani if zoning officer, excuse me, is up to the zoning officer. If, you know, based upon what's been shared tonight, if he would be so kind as to follow up with a correspondence of some type through Ms. Reyes's office to advise the board as to what the result of that hearing.
Mr. Allen?
Um, yeah, I've got no issues with that, I'll, um, the court date, scheduled court date is in just under thirty days, so October twenty-third, uh, once I receive a disposition at the end of that case, I have no problem with sending some written correspondence to Ms. Reyes. And for her to share with you guys at the next planning board meeting, I have no problem doing that at all.
As well as keeping an eye on the lot, just to make sure that it doesn't reoccur.
Correct, that's, that'll be done, that's in our daily, um, you know, our daily code enforcement and me as the zoning officer and my daily duties, uh, so that will continue to be done as well, uh, but especially after that twenty, October twenty-third court hearing, you guys will be informed via a written correspondence sent to Ms. Reyes.
And I think that would suffice the sport, so thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
You're very welcome. You're welcome, Board Secretary. You, you all have a great evening.
Thank you, you too.
You too.
Is that it for correspondence, Madam Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, so we'll move to adopt the July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes, and that was included in the drop box for all members. Hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to review it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Madam Secretary.
Councilman Montague was not part of that meeting, not able to vote?
All right, thank you. So with that, I'll accept a motion for the minutes for the July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion from Member Latour, is there a second? We have a second from Member on UK. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we do a roll call or all in favor?
No, roll call.
Roll, roll call it is.
Member on UK?
Yes.
Member Latour?
Yes.
Councilman Montague?
I'm saying.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is to memorial, memorialize resolution for case number twenty-five dash zero four, that's JMT Realty Corporation, four sixty dash four sixty-four Alden Street, which was a minor subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
The item number seven on the agenda, we still have to, it although it was not included in the package.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
Yes.
So it was not included, so we can, I knew that ahead of time. So we're moving to item number eight on the agenda, to memorialize the resolution for case number twenty-five dash zero four, JMT Realty Corporation, four sixty dash four sixty-four Alden Street, minor subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Montague abstained, was not present at the, at this, during this application, not a voting member, not able to vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Chairman, if I may?
No, I can't.
Councilman, you, you weren't present, so you cannot make the motion?
Okay.
Thank you.
I help you out, Councilman, motion.
We have a motion from Member Latour, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Member on UK. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Just one second, Chairman.
Yes.
Okay, Member on UK?
Yes.
Member Latour?
Yes.
Councilman Montague?
I'm saying.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With that, I'm gonna move to item number ten on the agenda. That's case number twenty-five dash ten, G and R Used Auto Sales, Inc., at seventy-eight South Jefferson Street, a preliminary and a final site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Madam Secretary.
We received the request for adjournment from Attorney Jennifer Carrillo for this case, and Attorney Webster is here, if, if there's any further questions.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, my partner asked for an adjournment, and I'm here if the board or any public members have any questions.
Madam Secretary, what would be the next date for?
The request for adjournment for this application for that was for the December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Planning Board meeting.
December eighteen, okay.
And the Attorney Wenzel, the request stated they waived the toll of time and renotice is up to the board if required or not.
Right, and I, I did have the opportunity, Chairman, through you, I did have the opportunity to speak with Ms. Reyes about this adjournment request, this is a first adjournment request for this applicant, it's obviously their application, and it's their, you know, their opportunity to request this adjournment, I don't see any reason why. The board should not reschedule it at this point, with the understanding that the applicant would not need to renotice that the announcement in a minute or so by yourself as to the new, that, that new date in December, I think December eighteenth. Uh, is the, is the new date for this matter, and then the notice being provided at this meeting is the sufficient notice, and as Ms. Reyes indicated, the applicant has waived the time for a hearing on this matter.
So Attorney Wenzel, we looking for an emotion on this?
There would be known reason.
No need for adjourn, no need for adjournment, all right.
Right, it's, it's their request for an adjournment, and the only thing is to announce the new date and to advise the public that that is the date for them to return on.
So the case number twenty-five dash ten, which G and R Used Auto Sales, Inc., at seventy-eight South Jefferson Street, with the preliminary and final site plan approval, that case will be adjourned and will be heard on December eighteenth, and for all those, all the public members that are present for that case, that case will be heard on December eighteenth, and there will be no further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will let Ms. Perez know, Ms. Carrillo Perez know.
You're welcome. So with that, I'm going, jumping, we're gonna jump back to case number, I mean, item number nine, which is case number twenty-five dash zero nine, Diana Marcela Acuna Martinez. That's five forty-three McChesney Street, preliminary and final site plan approval with a C variance.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Madam Secretary.
Um, Attorney Webster is here on behalf of the applicant, because I don't see Rebecca.
I don't see her either, so I guess I'll have to rock out.
It wasn't me, it wasn't me, Attorney.
Yeah, I think you scared her, I think you scared her off, I think you scared her off. Uh, this is a, a relatively small project, it's a two-family house on McChesney that we are converting to a three-family. All the notices are sufficient, I provided them within ten days, I have three, I'm sorry, I have, I guess, three witnesses this evening, I have my engineer, my architect, and my planner, Mr. McDonough. My planner, I see somewhere, I see John there, okay, Javier, I see Javier, and I see Bob, Dr. Izmar. Okay, so my first witness this evening, Mr. Chairman, would be Dr. Ismar, he's my, he's my engineer, and if I could have him sworn in, and. We'll voir dire him.
Hey, Dr. Isdar, okay, this is the first time I've had a doctor, but that's okay, uh, do, uh, let me show you, something hurts when I do this, um, so, uh, do you swear or tell the truth to this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so if we can have you to state and spell your name for the record, please?
Uh, sure, my name is Bahman Izadmehr, the first name is spelled B A H M A N, last name I Z A D M E H R, I'm principal of development engineering at seventy-five Parkhurst, Newark, New Jersey.
Okay, and Attorney Webster, want to get his qualifications on briefly?
Sure, I'm, I'm not sure if he's been before this board before, but.
I have been.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask you to. I'm gonna ask you to, please provide the board the benefit of your credentials and your experience, not all of it, just, just enough to give us.
Sure.
For a while.
Okay, I have a Bachelor of Science degree in civil and a master's and a doctorate degree in civil engineering from University of Texas at Austin, I have been a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety, my license is current and in effect, I have been before almost every single board in the state of New Jersey, as well as this particular planning board in City of Orange.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer Mr. Doctor Ismar as an expert in civil engineering. Uh, Mister Chairman, I'd offer Mister, uh, Doctor Ismar as an expert in civil engineering.
This board will accept Doctor Izadmir, and forgive me if you don't mind me calling you doctor, is that okay?
And you can call me Bahman.
Doctor, thanks good, Bahman?
Yes.
Okay.
My first name, and you pronounce my last name excellently.
I'm, I'm a school teacher, so it helps to sound out.
So we are in the same boat.
Izadmir, so it's a pleasure to have you here, I must have missed the meeting that you were here before, uh, was this is my first time seeing you, but this board will accept Doctor Bahman Izadmir as an expert in engineering. And Doctor, your testimony will be limited to that as an engineer.
Sure.
Welcome to the City of Orange Township.
Oh, thank you very much, good evening, everyone.
Doc, if you could share your screen and just walk us through the existing condition and then walk us into the proposed condition?
Madam Secretary, can you, uh, give Mr Doctor Izad?
Yes.
The, you have it? Very good, thank you.
Try now, please.
Okay, let's see now. I'll try again, I got the message that is disabled, okay, here we go. Uh, can everyone see the site plan being displayed on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent, so as, uh, council referred, this is a very simple project. At the applicant is requesting the board's approval to convert the existing two-family house to a three-family. With minimal expansion of the footprint of the house, as is shown on grayish color here, uh, there is, um, basically, a addition in the front, even though this addition already exists in, in form of, uh, first floor. But we are showing in this color because it's going up all the way to the third floor. And then addition on the right side of the property next to the driveway. And then a small addition in the back with a staircase going to all the floors. Um, we, we, we basically, uh, are proposing uh, for this particular, uh, conversion of a two-family to a three-family, four parking spaces. Uh, two will be inside the existing garage, which is, uh, pretty uh, large garage, and then two uh, open parking spaces next to the garage to the right or to the east of the garage. And then there will be plenty room, of course, available in the park, uh, in the driveway itself, or uh, in front of the garage to do tandem parking. But we didn't show it because they are tandem parking, but they are available for additional parking spaces if required. Uh, it's a very simple project, and as part of this exercise, we are reducing the existing impervious coverage, which is roughly about forty, uh, four thousand seventy square foot. We are reducing it to about thirty-eight fifteen, so three thousand eight hundred fifteen a square foot. So the difference is about two hundred fifty a square foot, uh, therefore, we do not have to provide a a drainage system. We are also providing lighting on the facade of the house. Actually, we're providing two fixtures, uh, facing the driveway, so with adequate candle foot that will not spill over the neighbors, and then we are providing two also uh, fixtures in the rear of the house, one basically attached to the building and one attached above the garage wall or garage doors. So that will also lead the area in front of the garage, as well as those two spaces to the east of the garage. So we have also improved landscaping, there is a landscaping alongside the, the building, uh, the house. And, uh, in front of the, basically sidewalk. So all in all, uh, we meet all the zoning requirements except um, I have to be able to read this, if you would. Size here. Okay. Here we go, um, basically, we have minimum front yard, we are not, uh, basically uh, changing that, it's, it stays the same as it exists today. Existing is point four, five feet, so about less than six inches. And the requirement, um, it's about five feet, but I, I'm sorry, we are actually increasing that to one point twenty-five feet. Then the rear yard, the requirement is ten, uh, currently we have forty-one, we are reducing it to thirty-four point one nine. The minimum side yard is five feet, existing is one point oh five, which remains the same for the proposed conversion. And the maximum building coverage, a permitted amount is about eighty percent. We are at thirty-seven point four, we are increasing it because of those additions that I discussed earlier on, in the rear and on the side, and on the second floor up in the front to forty-six percent. Uh, the maximum impervious perimeter is ninety, whereas we have ninety-four percent today, but we are reducing it to eighty-eight percent. In terms of parking, uh, we were advised initially that parking requirement is point eight per unit. So that which, uh, that, uh, would have translated to about two point four, so we were providing three. But we have increased the number of parking spaces to four. Uh, as, uh, as I explained, there are plenty of spaces on the site to provide additional tandem parking. If, um, if that doesn't work, then there is, of course, uh, street parking available, there is alternative parking permitted on on the street itself, I believe it's from Sunday to Wednesday on one side. And then from Wednesday to following Sunday on the other side. So if you look at the aerial pictures that I could share, there are very, um, few cars parked there at any given time. And there is also a municipal parking behind the house, which is also available for the tenants, as well as public transportation, walking, you know, car sharing and so forth and so on. So we don't really expect any issue with parking at this location. And most of the folks who will be renting, uh, this is, this will be owner occupied, of course, but the other units which are for rent, uh, they will be available for people with cars or with other cars, so as, as I said, there is public transportation available, there is parking. So I don't really see any issue with the parking. So that will conclude my test, my brief testimony on this conversion. I would be more than glad if I could answer any question that Mister Chairman or the board members or the board professionals have.
Um, my next witness, Mister Chairman, is, uh, Mister Fuentes?
Um, Attorney Webster, Attorney Webster. I, I think there are questions for?
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to answer questions once the whole presentation, but if each witness, we can answer, that's fine.
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Madam Secretary?
This, um, press, we need to mark this, and this was not provided digitally.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, I, I'll mark this as applicants A one. Uh, and, and Mister, Doctor Ismar, if you could just describe what this is?
Okay, uh, this is the same, um, site plan that we had initially submitted, plus the comments that, uh, we had gotten during the, the TRC meeting. And subsequently, we received the review letters from the planner and the board engineer. Uh, I believe they were dated like September eleventh, so we took those comments also into consideration and revised the plans accordingly.
Okay.
So this is the latest version that was submitted about two weeks ago, uh, to the township.
Wait, wait, hold up. I'm sorry, Attorney Webster, I didn't mean to, I, I, I didn't mean to break in, but I did. Uh, so, wait, so I, let me just understand this, Ms, Ms, Ms Reyes. So the, i- if w- were these documents submitted to the board? Or these, or these brand new for tonight?
They are brand, they are brand new for tonight, we only have the physical copy, we never received this digitally.
Okay, so the, so the board?
Application says digitally and physical.
Okay, so when, so with the packet that went to the board, just so we're on the same page here, I think uh, the packet that went to the board did not include?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, so what's?
No, 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 that, I, the physical copy that was submitted did, the electronic copy didn't, right? So the board got a hard copy of this, they didn't get a electronic copy of this. So, but they did get a, they did get a hard copy, so.
All right.
I, I, I just wanna get on the record what date this was produced, uh, Bahman, just what, when did we produce this?
The original date of the site plan is June twenty-first, twenty-four.
Right.
With the latest revision of September ten, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So what we'll do is we will call this exhibit A one, and we'll identify it as updated digital version of site plan.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, um. Are there any questions from any board member for, uh, Doctor Izadmir? Doctor, I do, you said that there is no issues with parking in that area, and, um, I know that there is an issue with parking in that particular area off of Scotland Road. Do you have enough parking for this, uh, development?
Uh, we do. Uh, we, um, I was hoping to show the picture of an existing parking on the site, but unfortunately, I'm not able to do it. Um, maybe, um, my colleagues, um, could do it. Uh, there are now, uh, the picture shows, uh, there are cars parked along the driveway. It's a pretty long driveway. And then also there are cars parked between the rear of the building, rear of the house and the garage. So easily you can fit two cars here in between, two cars you could fit here behind, uh, the parking that we are showing all the way at the northeastern corner of the site in this area. And there are also, you could put one row of parking in tandem, back to back alongside the driveway. So actually, this site could accommodate eight parking spaces. But then it requires cooperation, if the cars cannot get out, they have to talk to each other and get the cars out. But easily you can fit definitely six cars with no issue whatsoever.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for Doctor Az, uh, Az, Izadmir, I apologize.
No problem.
All right, seeing none, thank you for your testimony, Doctor.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna ask my next witness, Mister Chairman, who is an architect?
Yes.
Um, Doctor, I'm gonna ask you to stop sharing your screen.
Yes, uh, that's what I was trying to do.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know why, oh, here we go.
Okay, so is that Mister Fuentes?
Yes, I, I don't see him, though.
Yeah, I got him, I, I, I figured, I got him by his glasses.
He's got architect glasses.
Yeah, exactly, as opposed to the attorney glasses from ShopRite. So, Mister Fuentes, you swear from tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Ms Fuentes, can you do us the favor of stating and spelling your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Javier Fuentes, uh, first name is J A V I E R. Last name Fuentes, F U E N T E S. Um, and if I may, I'll go through my credentials, history, so, um, I have my bachelor's degree in architecture um, from two thousand thirteen, I got my license in two thousand nineteen and has been in good standing since. Um, I have presented to numerous boards, uh, Newark, Westfield, Roswell Park, just to name a few. This will be my first time presenting to Orange, so thank you for having me.
And your license, you said is in good standing, Mister Chairman, I'm gonna offer, uh, Mister Fuentes as an expert in the field of architecture.
All right, this board will accept Mister Fuentes as an expert in architect, and Mister Fuentes, your testimony will be limited to that as an architect.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm gonna ask you to share your screen, um, and walk the board through the, uh, plan that you've designed. Uh-oh, we've got a question from Ms Reyes, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, here we go, I was just waiting to get, uh, thank you, thank you. Okay, let me just, um, let me go ahead and make this, everybody can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, um, so these are the architectural drawings, so as, you know, um, our engineer had mentioned, it's a conversion into a three-family. Um, and basically, what you're looking at here is, on the top is a picture of the existing structure. And on the bottom, the proposed, the, design for this house. Um, the, part of the reasoning that we're going through this process is the the, the current design of the space is, is very limited, it's modest, it's very small. And it's difficult to navigate, in fact, the access to the basement is directly in front where that front door is that you see. That takes you into this small box space, and then you kinda have to duck down to get into the basement from there. Um, and the first floor and second floor, as I mentioned, very modest, if we're going into A one O one, which is looking at the floor plans of the existing house, you can see um, the first floor as you walk in. Sorry, one second, I just, uh, for some reason, it's not working with me today, today. All right, so as you walk into the balcony, you have access in here, and this is a small living room, as you can see, it's six feet wide by ten foot and a half deep, it's a very, very small living space. And then directly adjacent to that open is a dining room, a kitchen, bathroom, a utility room. And then there's a office, which we do believe it was in originally in a bedroom, bedroom here. Um, and then there's two stairway access points that take you to the second floor. Going up here where we have a similar layout to below, except that it had the benefit of having this additional space um, towards the back that is cover, a covered area at the bit, at the bottom level below. So this is where the kitchen is situated. And that kinda drew some inspiration to the design as far as like what we were going with. You know, we were trying to as much as possible, you know, look at, of course, the complexity of the existing building, utilizing some of the existing footprint, but trying to also implement some new features that could really benefit the space. Um, so some of those things, and it, it's part of what you saw in, um, our engineers' layout of the site plan, where we have an addition in the front, an addition on the side, an addition on the rear, really tries to take, um, you know, some of the inspiration from the original building, but build upon that a little more, right? So we were able to create, uh, a much nicer living room space with a mudroom area. Um, so as you come in from, you know, this is your entryway from the front portico, this is the common stairway. And you make your way inside into the living space with a mudroom. You go in here and you have a nice open common space where you have a dining area, kitchen. You have this door access to the yard with a stairway, if you're at the upper levels. You have a, a smaller third bedroom here, we have our bedroom, second bedroom, and our first bedroom, master bedroom in the front with, uh, a private bathroom, so making this a, a nice en suite space for the bedroom. And, uh, the second floor is exactly the same. The third floor changes a little bit in that we introduced this interior stairway that takes you up to a, uh, a storage attic space, one of the uh, one of the requests by the owners, or the applicant was to try to make a, a spacious attic that was, you know, A, a spacious attic that was, you know, you could walk up to and make, be able to store things properly and. Not have like a hatch door that you have to go up to. Uh, but, and then that works out really nicely because of the way that this lays out. Um, we've stepped this back. Um, still a decent sized bedroom, same similar layout that you saw from above, just a little bit of a different configuration. Um, and you can then see in our elevations, this is what that looks like. You know, so it kind of really helps break the scale down a little bit of the building in the front. Uh, creates a really nice, uh, design peak feature to the, uh, to the roof and creating something that, you know. Has a much better look, feel, um, and of course, much, uh, a, a little more spacious. Um, you know, going from a, a much smaller living room space. To at least some, a, a better decent, more organized space for this, uh, this family. So the, so each level you can see, we have, each of these are one unit. And that is, uh, each of those. And then the attic space is, uh, accessed directly from only the third unit. And, um, I should mention that at the basement, the, while it's not here, but this is a stairway going down. That's access to the basement and there's going to be some just utilities. It's unfinished, but it's, it's the existing basement that's just been expanded because we now have a new foundation line for the additions that are created. And with that, I, um, conclude our testimony and would like to open this to any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further direct questions for this witness. I yield him to you.
Well, I'll open up to any board member that has any questions for Mr. Fuentes. Uh, Mr. Fuentes, wh- what is in the basement?
Uh, currently it's, um, it's unfinished. There's really nothing there. Um, and it, and it is going to maintain, be maintained that way. Um, it's just going to be utilized to, uh, for storage purposes. Um, it, it's going to be, you know, accessed through the common stairway. Um, but just, yeah, that's, it's, it's only a, uh, a storage space.
And all three families will have access to that? To store whatever. So it's like an open area, basically.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Mr. Fuentes? All right, Mr. Fuentes, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, my last witness this evening is, uh, John McDonough. He's my planner. And I think Mr. McDonough is familiar to this board.
Yes, I am.
All right, John, uh, do you swear firm and tell the truth, uh, to this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and John, can you give us the benefit? Like, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, my name is, uh, John, J O H N, uh, M C, capital D O N, O U G H, Project Plan.
All right, and, uh, Mr. McDonough's qualification, Mr. McDonough is. Quite honestly, Mr. McDonough has been qualified as a planner before this board, um, numerous occasions. Uh, Chairman, and assuming that Mr. McDonough has not gotten an email tonight telling him that his. Uh, planner's license in New Jersey has been revoked. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming that we can accept him as a planner, Chairman.
Mr. McDonough, did you get an email?
I did not, I did not and have not ever got that dreaded email.
Very good. So again, welcome back to Orange and this board will accept Mr. McDonough as an expert in planning. And as you know, your testimony will be limited to that as a planner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, John, I know you've had a chance to take a look at both the architectural and engineering plans. Um, I'd like you just to share with the board, um. I guess there's three items that we're asking for relief on, and I'd like you just to kind of walk through that and address those issues. And, uh, hopefully you can provide some testimony, uh, that would make the board feel comfortable in supporting our, our application this evening.
Sure thing. I'll be relatively brief, Mr. Jim, but because the relief list here is relatively brief as well. Um, this site is in the CRV, uh, RP or the Central Valley Redevelopment Plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. McDonough. Can I, I apologize for interrupting. Just for the record, I want to. Um, Member Forston has arrived to the planning board meeting at eight nineteen. Just wanted to get that on the record. I apologize for the interruption.
Uh, no problem. So again, we're here in the Central Valley Redevelopment Plan, uh, District number two. Where the proposed three family uses are permitted use. So the applicant's not asking the board to move on every, any of the, um. Heavier zoning controls in the, uh, CVRP Zone District. Notably, the use complies, the density complies. Uh, we are looking for some setback relief. On the one side, there's a deviation of one point oh five feet proposed where a minimum of five feet is required. That's an existing condition, an existing non-conforming condition. And then on the other side, similarly, one point two four feet where five feet is the minimum required. Um, you will see from the visuals that I show you, a couple of, uh, aerial drone photos. This is a site that has excellent capacity in terms of the lot size compared to the other lots in the neighborhood. So it can certainly accommodate this permitted three family use, notwithstanding those setback deviations. Um, as you heard through doctor's testimony as well, we have parking relief where four spaces are technically provided on the site. More could be provided, but they would not adhere to the dimensional requirements of the zone. Uh, where a minimum of six are required. And, um. With that, I will actually jump to a couple of drone shots, just to give you a little context. It says host has disabled participant screening, Mr. Chair, if I could get access.
Alex, Alexandra keeps it tight, John.
I understand. We've seen a lot of weird things on Zoom lately.
Yeah, we've got a few incidents.
Yes, yes, you've been here, so you know how we work.
I was here, I was here, it was a lot, it was a lot. Uh, John, I'm gonna ask you to mark this as A two and, and describe, uh, what the package is of the, or the series of documents that you'll be presenting.
I'm gonna show you two photographs, um, taken by drone, actually taken today. One is sort of a bird's eye view. That's what this first one is, which.
Uh, birds. Okay, so A two.
L two, uh, A two.
Of subject property, uh, take, uh, shot today, which is the, um. Twenty fourth of, uh, September.
September.
Yep.
Yes, I'd say mid afternoon is, is roughly when he was out there today. Um, and then A three is going to be, you'll see a top down view that'll help show how the site spatially relates. Um, again, this goes through doctor's testimony that there is parking allowed on both sides of the street. There was certainly capacity when we were there today within reasonable walking distance of the site. And of course, one of the things that makes Orange great is that you have not one, but multiple. Train stations within the community. And this site happens to be within a reasonable walking distance of both the mountain train station and the Scotland train station. I'd say about a fifteen minute walk, which is certainly within the domain of reasonable walk from a transit standpoint. So you do have somewhat lessened reliance on the automobile here with that, that transit amenity nearby. Um, but you can see from this photograph that there is certainly parking capacity on the street. There's also parking capacity on the site, again, not inconformant with all the dimensional requirements. So to the extent that we're looking to avoid some shunting of vehicles on the site, you've got the availability on the street as well. Um, so we'll just take this. Let me see if I can actually advance. Okay, do you now have a view of the top down or are we still on the last frame?
We're still on A two, John.
All right, I'm gonna stop share.
Yeah, it, it, it went right at the end. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. And then he, this will be A three. And it's a top down view. Um, has it populated? Can you see it on your screen?
Not yet.
Okay. Gotta love, gotta love bandwidth.
Yes, now we can.
Okay, so the subject site is this one that I'm circling with my mouse, which is the largest of the properties in the area. Has capacity for additional parking, which you don't see on the sites that are around it generally. So we do have that onsite parking amenity, which I think lends itself well to a higher intensity of use in terms of the three family. You've got the parking on the street as well. And then of course you've got the trains, uh, rail line right there. So you do have mitigative measures in terms of the parking relief. Um, in terms of the planning justifications here, we're going to turn to the balancing test where the benefits of the application as a whole. Would substantially outweigh the detriments. On the positive side, this is certainly going to promote the planning goal for efficient use of land. Taking the core of the building that's there, modifying it, retrofitting it to fulfill that important public purpose for new housing stocks. So simply going from a two to a three, which is a permitted use in the zone district, is consistent with the planning goal. Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare. Purpose M, efficient use of land. And then certainly retaining a building that is familiar in the local landscape goes towards purpose I, promotion of a desirable visual environment. Counterbalancing that, the relief related to the setbacks, think are self evident here. That from a light and air standpoint, the applicant is not doing anything that is out of the norm in the neighborhood. And, uh, through the testimony of both doctor and myself and the visuals before you. Um, we think the relief for four parking spaces as opposed to six being required are justifiable here as well. Given the context of the neighborhood and those surrounding, um, uh, surrounding public amenities. All said, this is a good application from a planning standpoint. Relatively minor modest relief that the applicant is asking the board to move on. We always talk about this missing middle housing, the two families, the three families as the alternate to the big apartment buildings. Um, we think this is a, a good planning solution in that regard. Uh, with that, I would offer that the criteria for approval are met and therefore approval is warranted here. Uh, that's all I have on direct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further for this witness. Um, I, I yield him to you and your professionals.
Many, uh, are there any questions from any board member for Mr. McDonough? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you, John. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have no further witnesses, uh, for this evening. Um, that's my case in chief.
All right, then with that, I'll ask, um, Mr. Hazel.
Hey, Jerry, do you swear firm and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Do, I do.
Yeah.
I, yeah, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, uh, you have my report and so try not to be, um. Repetitive, but this has been mentioned before by the applicant and their professionals. This is a pretty straightforward application, uh, an existing structure that is essentially going to remain, uh. Generally as, and, and I know they're gonna enlarge it a bit, but essentially the, 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 the. Most of the structure will remain. It will be modified and so, and, uh. Reconfigured to accommodate the addition of one additional, uh, dwelling unit to bring it from two family to three family. Which is, as you heard before, permitted in District Two of the Central Valley Redevelopment Plan. Um, this three variances have been triggered, uh, um, based on this, uh, proposed use. One of them is existing, which is the side yard setback. That's the side yard to the, in front of the house to the left. Which basically is not going to change from what it is now. Uh, what is however going to change is the, uh, setback in the front, and which as I, I mentioned in my report. Uh, is a, a bit of an improvement over what is there. And I think if you can look at the, uh, one of the pictures that I do have, uh. In the report, the first picture is a matter of fact, you can see that the access door to that area opens directly. Well, not onto the sidewalk, but just basically at the sidewalk. So, uh, even the smaller setback will be helpful. Plus they're, uh, proposing to move the door from that frontage altogether, which I think is the, 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 the best remedy for that. Um, other than that, as I, as you said, you went through the whole, uh, uh, layout, what's being proposed. I think this is a, a good application. The rooms and the layout of the, the site is very, um. Conducive to good and healthy, uh, living. Uh, I think in terms of the other variants of the parking. As, uh, Mrs. Isad, uh, Dr. Isad Mir mentioned, um, you know, while we don't. Actually can't actually count it per se as parking because it would be tandem. There is a substantially long driveway which can accommodate, uh, over two cars in it. That is also available. It would be a bit of a con- inconvenience if someone has to come out and move their car for somebody else to get out. But, you know, um, when parking is a premium, that's not a very big price to pay. Um, other than that, I think, as I said before, I think this is a good application and I think it's making good use of an existing property, modernizing it. Bringing it, uh, up to, to more modern standards. And I think the design changes are also, uh, a very positive change. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hazel? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have the board engineer.
John, okay, do you swear firm and tell truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Uh, 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 good evening, board members and, and everyone. I, uh. I, I will keep this brief as well, following the, the testimony of the applicant and their professionals. As well as, uh, Mr. Hazel. Uh, I do concur that this is a, uh. A, a straightforward application and, and even particularly from the engineering perspective, it's, it's, uh, well put together and is. Um, commensurate with, uh, what's nearby. Uh, I also do concur regarding parking, that yes, technically they wouldn't fit based on size. And, and as that relates to the code, but also in, in the real physical space, there would be availability. For those cars to park in there. Um, so with, uh, with that, that's about all I have direct. Unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cahillane. Are there any questions from any board members for Mr. Cahillane? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hazel, I apologize. I should have asked this question and just when you are still under oath. Um, the, the street parking, that is alternate side of the street parking, is that correct?
I think the, uh, the cleaning days where it alternates, yes.
Right, okay. So there's no parking on both sides at one day, on any.
I don't believe so, no.
All right, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you. Um, Attorney Webster, we are now going to open the public portion. Would you like an opportunity to close after public?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to close once the public has a chance to speak, yes.
Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to open public portion of this application. Is there a motion?
Motion, Montague.
We have a motion from Councilman Montague. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Member La Torre. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye or raise your hand. Is there anyone that opposes opening the public portion of this application? Seeing none, public portion is now open. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application, I ask that you first turn on your camera. Second, state your name and address for the record and then address any concerns that you may have. You have a three minute limit, time limit, and we are going to begin with Ms. Rodriguez.
All right, so here are my questions. It's not necessarily to anything about this application, but given the fact. Alicia Rodriguez, forty seven Mountain View F. So when are we allowed?
Ms. Rodriguez, hold on. Rodriguez, one second. Uh, so one, when Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
For interested parties, the, the first step is we need, uh, we need your, we need your na- name. State your names and spell your name, please, for the record, and also give us your address and then the chairman will let you know when you can go ahead.
Where's my timer?
The ti- the timer, timer hasn't started, ma'am.
Can't see it. No, I know, but I want to make sure I can see it so that I, you know, pace myself.
Okay, well, why don't, why don't we start by giving your, you give us, give us your name and address first?
Alicia Rodriguez, forty seven Mountain View F.
Okay. All right.
Let me know when my timer starts, please.
Chairman, you're.
Yes, I'm getting a timer. You can begin.
Okay, I started mine too. When are we allowed to speak to you about general concerns? Why was I not allowed to speak on general issues regarding your decisions as planning board members last week? Why is there not a space for the agenda for citizen comment?
I'm sorry, uh, you're.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object.
I'll pick it up.
Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, I'm gonna object. The, 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 this is for, uh, questions that are specific to the application, the case in chief that we put in. If this wit, if this, uh, citizen doesn't have questions with respect to this application. I'm gonna ask that any statement she may be struck with respect to the board's consideration of this application. I'm going to ask that any statement she may be struck with respect to the board's consideration of this application.
Attorney Wenzel.
So, yeah, so so for planning board applications, for any land use board application, this is the time for the interested parties to ask questions and make a statement about the application that's before the board at this time. The application before the board is with regard to this property at five forty three Machesney. If Ms. Rodriguez, if you have any questions or concerns about five forty three Machesney, this would be the time to share them.
And when do we get to ask general questions?
The the just so you're aware, the land use boards, this does not operate like a municipal council. There is no open session. The opens, the matter is opened for interested parties to make commentary about the application that's before. It's a quasi judicial board and they are opening up the floor to interested parties to speak about the application that's before.
Understood. When can I ask general questions to the planning board about general applications?
There is no.
When do I have the opportunity? So there's no opportunity for the public to speak to you guys about anything regarding the planning board? So where can you could just give me an email where I can ask these questions or who I can reach out to specifically in regards to my concerns?
Okay. Ms. Reyes.
Yes, Attorney Wenzel.
Okay, can can we can we have Ms. Rodriguez have your email and then we can see about responding to that?
Yes, sir. A Reyes, R E Y E S at orangenj.gov. I'm going to repeat. A Reyes, that's A R. I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, are you still there?
Yes, I'm listening.
All right, A Reyes, that's R E Y E S at orangenj.gov.
All right. So Ms. Rodriguez, you do not want your three minutes. Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, well, actually, yes, I do want. So my only question would be to you is this whole thing about what time did you guys go and check today for the parking? Like what timeframe are you guys checking? And are you guys taking into consideration any of the developments that are actually going to be going up in the next year or two? When you're saying that parking is available and from my understanding, you said it's only a one car width. I have a one car width and it's extremely difficult living with four people to move those cars around. So odds are those people will not be parking in the driving in the in the parking lot. So what time did you guys check? Did you guys do some kind of traffic study to figure out, okay, is it really, have you guys considered everything that's going up in the area? As I'm sure it's going to affect all residents on that block?
The pictures that were taken today were taken mid afternoon. We did not do a traffic study. It's a small project. It's a one it's a one unit addition. It's a two car variance. We did not do a any traffic study.
Okay, I mean, I was just asking because again, twelve o'clock, everybody's at work, kids are still in school. So that was not a fair assessment, in my opinion, to say that it's not, you know, that there's parking available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next, I see Rachel Tennant. Ms. Tennant, if you can state your name and your address for the record, and then I will start, let you know when your start, your three minutes begin.
Okay, good evening, Rachel Tennant, four six one Waverly Place.
And you can begin.
Okay, can you go over how many bedrooms for each unit? Will this be owner occupied? Is there a fire escape? I haven't seen any fire escape. Because I know there's a project next to me and they had to install a fire escape. And was the owner of the house next door where they notified? So they could be here tonight to speak on the project, because it's literally next door. I think if one stuck their arm out the window, they could touch the other house. So were they notified so they could be here, so they could speak and voice their concerns? So again, the bedrooms, fire escape, will this be owner occupied? And was the neighbor at, I guess, four five five Machesney Street notified? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Fuentes to to come back online. The notice went to every property owner within two hundred feet. That notice has been provided to the board secretary and I believe it's been reviewed by board counsel to give us jurisdiction this evening. The property will be owner occupied. He will occupy, the owner will occupy the first floor of the unit. That's where he lives. The question with respect to fire escapes and bedrooms, I'm going to ask Mr. Fuentes to answer. I don't know the answer to those questions.
Not a problem. I could share my screen again if you would like. Maybe that just might help with the visual. So let me just open that for you. If Ms. Reyes.
Yeah, you really don't have to, as long as you're explaining if there's one, how many bedrooms.
Okay, okay, no problem. Yeah, so there are three bedrooms per unit. There's three units. And yes, there is a fire escape in the back of the building that is accessible directly from each unit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tennant. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this application? And Madam Secretary, I'm going to ask that you help me to look. I'm not seeing anyone.
No, no one else, Chairman.
With that, I entertain a motion to close public portion of this application.
Motion Montague.
We have a motion from Councilman Montague. Are there any, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Latour. Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor of closing the public portion of this application, please say aye or raise your hand. Is there anyone that opposes closing the public portion of this application? Seeing none, public portion is now closed. Attorney Webster?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a small application, much smaller than we kind of normally were talking about. It's a one unit addition. It's got one new variance. The two other variances are, one is the same and one is being made better. I think the takeaway from both the planning reports and kind of our testimony is that we're taking kind of a funky little addition that was put on and we're actually making it really nice. It's going to be a much nicer looking project. It's architect designed. It's going to be a much nicer looking building when it's all set and done. We are adding a unit. There is a little bit of a parking issue. We think that based upon what we see in the area and the fact that there is a public parking lot about half a block away on the same block, that we should be okay if it becomes an issue. The reality is, is that it's right next to a train station. We've provided enough testimony, I think, for the board to support it. It is what it is in this kind of instance. I'm hoping that the board is is understanding. And I think we've produced enough testimony and Mr. McDonough has made a good case that it won't impact the zoning plan. And that's that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my that's my conclusion for this evening.
Thank you, sir. With that, I entertain a motion for this application.
Motion to approve case number twenty five dash oh nine, Diana Marcella Acuna Martinez, five forty three Machesney Street, preliminary and final site plan approval with variances four. Minimal front yard setback at one point five to four feet, where five feet is required. Minimal side yard setback on west side of one point five, one point oh five feet, where five feet is required. Insufficient parking of four spaces where six spaces are required. As condition of approval, the applicant will comply with the board experts' report as detailed in the planner's report dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and the engineer's report dated September eleventh, twenty twenty five. So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it, Weldon Montague.
We have a second from Councilman Montague. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary?
Member Fauston?
Yes.
Member Anukay?
Yes.
Member Latour?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Board Secretary.
Good night and welcome to Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Was I supposed to abstain or make a vote? You didn't call me.
I'm so sorry. Attorney Webster. Attorney Wenzel.
I'm still here.
Thank you so much. Can I, and Chairman, can I please do roll call again? My apologies.
So just so, all right.
To you, Attorney Wenzel.
We 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 always appreciate when the public assists. So Member Fauston came in in the middle of the application. I think he heard maybe one and a half of the of the testimony, okay? Now, Councilman Montague, you were here for the whole testimony. So, you know, normally we're telling you to abstain, Councilman Montague, but now now is the time for you to shine. You can take, you can certainly take on the mantle of our of our great former vice council president, Eason. So I hope you do well. So we're going to, we're going to see how this works. So we're going to start that roll call again, but Member Member Fauston came in, I believe, halfway through.
So should Member Fauston abstain?
It would.
Because it was one test.
Ms. Rodriguez has obtained the very good use of the chat. But yes, Member Fauston came in 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 the middle of this, so we need some. Okay.
Madam Secretary. We have a motion from Member Latour and a second from Councilman Montague.
Montague, yes.
There were no questions and now we're ready for roll call.
Member Fauston.
Abstain.
Thank you. Member Anukay?
Yes.
Member Latour?
Yes.
Councilman Montague?
Yes.
Mayor Warren? Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Here we go. Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations again, and my apologies, Councilman Montague.
Just for everyone's, just to let you know, I am council vice president.
Oh, okay.
Council Vice President. Thank you for that.
I did not know that. Congratulations.
So 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 now we just got to make sure, Ms. Reyes, you just got to make sure when you say council vice president, don't say council vice president Eason.
My roster is updated.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the time and the energy and I hope everyone has a good evening.
Thank you. You do the same. With that, we're going to move the agenda to any unfinished business. Some call it old business, I call it unfinished. Seeing none, is there any new business? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from council vice president, Montague. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Member Latour. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Is there anyone that opposes adjourned this meeting at eight forty nine P M? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good care.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.